All right, my clock shows six thirty and I want to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting, Sunnyside Regular City Council Meeting for Monday, November twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-one. Before we go to the roll call, we have a couple of individuals who have requested an excused absence. Mayor Guerrero is unable to participate and would like an excused absence as well as Councillor Hart has requested an excused absence this evening. If there are no objections, we'll go ahead and grant them their excused absence. Hearing none, they are excused. Thank you. All right, I will now remind everyone this meeting is being livestreamed using Zoom. I ask that you please allow one person to speak at a time. I will do my best to call on every member to make sure that you've had the opportunity to speak and to ask any questions you may have. And I would now like to ask Deputy City Clerk Rangel to start the roll call, please.
Deputy Mayor Borisma?
I am here.
Councillor Farmer?
Here.
Councillor Beeler?
Here.
Councillor Sutuchi?
Here.
Councillor Hicks?
Here.
Interim City Manager Alba?
Here.
Interim Finance and Admin Services Director Horner?
Here.
Fire Chief Anderson?
I'm here.
Police Chief Escalera?
Here.
Public Works Director Fisher?
I'm here.
Deputy City Clerk Rangel and I'm here.
Thank you. All right. To get this evening started off, I've got two proclamations that I'd like to read into the record. The first has to do with our lighted farm implement parade. Thank you. And I'll read it as follows. Whereas the city of Sunnyside has celebrated its annual event known as the Sunnyside Lighted Farm Implement Parade since late nineteen-eighties and wishes to commemorate the thirty-one years that this event has been held in our community. And whereas the city, the Sunnyside Lighted Farm Implement Parade is the oldest farm implement parade in the nation, paying unique tribute to Sunnyside's agricultural heritage, featuring tractors, combines, and antique farm equipment. Each piece is uniquely decorated with thousands of twinkling lights. And whereas we wish to honor those individuals and groups who assist in the event, including the Sunnyside Rotary Club, Sunnyside Police Department, Fire Department, and Public Works Department, local businesses, sponsors, and participants, as well as the countless volunteers for whom the city is forever grateful. Now therefore, I Dean Borisma, Deputy Mayor of the City of Sunnyside, Washington, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the laws of the state of Washington and on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the first Saturday in December as Lighted Farm Implement Parade Day in the city of Sunnyside. I encourage all citizens of our community to attend and participate in the events planned for that weekend. In testimony whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Sunnyside to be affixed, done at the city of Sunnyside this twenty-second day of November in the year of our Lord, two thousand twenty-one. The second proclamation that I would like to read concerns Pearl Harbor, Pearl Harbor Day. So I will read this into the record as well. Whereas, in the early morning of December seven, nineteen forty-one, elements of the Imperial Japanese Navy attacked the US naval base at Pearl Harbor, Hawaii. The surprise attack left more than three thousand five hundred Americans either dead or wounded and one-third of the US naval fleet in ruins. And whereas, on this eightieth anniversary of that attack, we wish to join President Joe Biden and Washington Governor Jay Inslee in honoring those who paid the ultimate sacrifice for our nation. And whereas the Congress by public law, one oh-three dash three zero eight, as amended, has designated December seven of each year as National Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day. Now therefore, I Dean Borisma, Deputy Mayor of the City of Sunnyside, Washington, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the laws of the state of Washington and on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, December seven, two thousand twenty-one, as Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day in the city of Sunnyside. I encourage all citizens of our community to observe this day with appropriate programs and ceremonies and activities in honor of those veterans of World War II and their families for the priceless liberty which they helped to secure for our country and its future. Furthermore, I direct the city manager to lower the flag of the United States and Washington State on, at all city facilities pursuant to Sunnyside Municipal Code, Chapter one dot one four. The flag should remain at half-staff until the close of business or sunset on that same day. In testimony whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Sunnyside to be affixed, done at the city of Sunnyside this twenty-second day of November in the year of our Lord, two thousand twenty-one. All right, public comments. Madam City Manager, have we received any emails or communications to City Hall about people who would want to make public comments? Can you hear me all right? Have I gone away? Hello?
I can hear you just fine.
Okay. All right. Elizabeth, are you, are you on? Okay, she was having, there you are. Elizabeth, do we have any communication from anybody wanting to make a public comment?
I did not receive any.
Okay. Do we have anybody on this Zoom meeting who would like to make a public comment? Very well, we will now continue then with the consent agenda. Consent agenda consists of the following. Item A, minutes, approve the minutes of the October twenty-five, two thousand twenty-one regular meeting. Two, approve the minutes of the November one, two thousand twenty-one workshop. B, payroll vouchers, number one one nine zero two five through one one nine zero three zero, and wire transfers as listed for four hundred twenty-six thousand twelve dollars and fourteen cents for the period ending on November eleven, two thousand twenty-one. C, claim vouchers, approved claim voucher numbers one zero two four zero zero through one zero two four four five, and wire transfers as listed for eighty-five thousand five hundred and seventy dollars and nine cents for the period ending on November ten, two thousand twenty-one. And two, approve, approved claim voucher numbers one zero two four four six through one zero two four eight nine, and wire transfers as listed for two hundred and seventy thousand seventy-six dollars and thirteen cents for the period ending on November eighteen, two thousand twenty-one. Would anyone like to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, this is Councillor Farmer. I wish to remove check number sixteen six oh nine.
One six six zero nine, very good. Any other members like to remove an item for discussion? Hearing none?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, this is Councillor Sutuchi. I would move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Very well, Mr. Sutuchi, we have, we have a motion by Mr. Sutuchi. Do we have a second?
Counselor, excellent second.
Very good. So we have a motion by Mr. Sutuchi, second of my Mr. Hicks, to approve the consent agenda as amended. Any debate on this item? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to go down the roll call for the vote.
Deputy Mayor Borisma?
Yes.
Councillor Sutuchi?
Yes.
Councillor Beeler?
Yes.
Councillor Hicks?
Yes.
Councillor Farmer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor, you have five yes and zero no.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Farmer.
Yes. I've objected to every one of these checks and I'm not going to change it tonight. I'm objecting to the check to Mr. Martin Casey, former city manager, for one thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and four cents. I believe that this is a gift of public funds and I do not believe the council is exercising its fiduciary responsibility to the citizens by allowing this to continue.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. Ms. Alba, correct me if I'm wrong, is this the last payment to Mr. Casey?
No, he will have one payment on Wednesday this week and that will be the last payment.
Okay, will it be for the same amount?
It will be for the same amount.
Okay. All right, we give council members an opportunity to ask questions and make comments on this one, and we will start with Mr. Sutuchi.
No questions or comments, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Beeler?
No questions or comments.
Mr. Hicks?
Only comment I would have is our next contract we do, we need to put up a terminate themselves, I don't get the extra.
Very good. Mr. Farmer, do you think any more, any more to say on this issue?
I do not.
What is the desire of council on this one item?
Councillor Beeler, I move to approve.
Councillor Sutuchi, I'll second.
Very good. We have a motion by Mr. Beeler, second of my Mr. Sutuchi, to approve check number one six six zero nine to Martin Casey. Any debate on this item? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to go down the list for the vote, please.
Deputy Mayor Borisma?
Yes.
Councillor Sutuchi?
Yes.
Councillor Beeler?
Yes.
Councillor Hicks?
Yes.
Councillor Farmer?
No.
Deputy Mayor, you have four yes and one no.
All right, motion carries. Thank you. Item three, active agenda. First item on our active agenda is a preliminary budget public hearing, the second of two, to receive public comment on the two thousand twenty-two preliminary budgets. This public hearing is being held to receive public comment on the two thousand twenty-two preliminary budget. The concern is that this hearing be fair, inform, and substance, as well as appearance. Council members, do you have any conflict of interest concerning this issue? Do any of you stand to gain or lose any financial benefit as a result of the outcome of this hearing? If your answer is yes, please speak now. Council members, can you hear and consider this in a fair and objective manner? If your answer is no, please speak now. Audience members, at this time, we would ask the audience if there are any objections to my participation or any other council members' participation in these proceedings. This public hearing is now open as of six forty-three PM. Madam City Clerk, if you please provide a report on this item?
Would that be me he would like to?
I'm sorry, Madam City Manager, my head just all of a sudden went to clerk and I apologize.
Well, I have, I have been a city clerk before, so it's okay. I, pretty much this item is a sort of repeat of last meeting. There has been no changes made to the budget from our preliminary budget. And then I will invite Interim Finance and Admin Services Director to comment if she'd like to put something else on this item.
As the city manager said, we have made no changes since our most recent hearing that took place at the last meeting on November eighth. So at this time, our, our proposed appropriations equal thirty-seven million, three hundred and eighty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars for fund year two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you. Have we received any comments from the public about this question?
No, we have not.
Is there anyone in the audience tonight who would like to make comments on this, on the budget for two thousand twenty-two? Hearing none, council members, any questions on this item?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councillor Farmer. I, I do have a couple of questions.
Okay.
At our last meeting, maybe I misunderstood, is the position of Deputy Chief and Police Commander, are they included in this budget?
I'll turn, turn that over. I'll turn that over to Ms. Horner.
They are now included. When we, when we initially presented the preliminary budget at the budget workshop, on November first, they were not included, but following discussion. Oh, no, actually, they were included. Yes, the, sorry, the, the assistant chief positions were included. The only position we added after the preliminary budget was the street crime sergeant to the police department.
I, I don't remember approving those, but if, if it was done, it was done.
Yeah, when we had the very first budget meeting, not the workshop or not the original one that was held in Prosser, but the very first meeting, we discussed the addition of seven positions. And at that meeting, the council gave us the go-forward to go ahead and add those this year. And to show you those numbers, which we, we did at the, at the workshop on November first.
I, I, I have some thoughts. I don't think I would like to fund that at this particular point in time, but those are just my thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. Any other comments? I can go down the list and I think I will do that. Mr. Farmer, you just spoke, so Councillor Beeler?
No, I have no more questions. Thank you.
Councillor Sutuchi?
No questions, just a comment, Mr. Deputy Mayor. This is a great budget. You know, kudos to Ms. Alba and her staff because I'm, I'm impressed. I, I know we have a lot of issues and we still have to decide what we're going to do with ARPA funds and things of that nature. But, you know, I've looked at a lot of other budgets around the state as a transportation commissioner, and I can tell you, we fared pretty well for COVID. So I'm, I'm, I'm very happy with this budget.
Thank you, sir. And Councillor Hicks?
No questions.
Very good. And I would echo Mr. Sutuchi's comments on that one. I'm quite impressed with the budget we were able to put together. Staff, you did an amazing job. Pat yourselves on the back. I think what could have happened with COVID, it could have been so much more difficult. And we definitely have some challenges ahead of us, and I think we all recognize that. But the work you did was, was really good. All right. This, if there are no other comments, this public hearing is closed as of six forty-eight PM. Next item on our agenda is a closed record hearing for the Country Gals Estates Phases one through three. Consider approving the attached resolution adopting the findings made by the Planning Commission and approving Country Gals preliminary plat application. This closed record decision hearing is being conducted on the proposed Country Gals preliminary plat. The closed record decision hearing shall be on record, prepared by the Planning Commission for the City Council, and no new evidence may be presented. The concern is that this hearing be fair, inform, and substance, as well as appearance. Council members, do any of you have a conflict of interest concerning this issue? Do any of you stand to gain or lose any financial benefit as a result of the outcome of this hearing? If your answer is yes, please speak now. Council members, can you hear and consider this in a fair and objective manner? If your answer is no, please speak now. Audience members, at this time, we would ask the audience if there's any objections to my participation or any other council members' participation in these proceedings. Very well, this closed record hearing is open as of six forty-nine. All right, we will ask the interim city manager to provide the staff report at this time.
I'm going to pass it on to Mike Shutterworth, the Planning and Community Developments Supervisor.
Thank you, city manager. This is a preliminary plat to divide approximately twenty-eight acres. There's about seven parcels involved into a hundred and twenty residential lots. This particular preliminary plat is located on the south side of Riverside Avenue, the east side of Heffernan Road, and north of Southwest Crescent. It is adjacent to the city limit line, which is Heffernan Road. This application was reviewed at a public hearing by the Planning Commission on November ninth, and in your packet, you've received all the information presented to the Planning Commission with the addition of a draft resolution. If you do decide to approve the preliminary plat, this preliminary plat, as you'll see, was included a conduction of a traffic study, and the traffic study came back basically that the intersections that would be impacted by this development will still operate in the level service prescribed by the city. So they'll be better than a level service C on the interchange. This particular development is adjacent to those roads I noted above, and those roads currently do not have curb gutter and sidewalk. And as a result of this application, they will be required to now put curb garden sidewalks on Riverside, Heffernan, and Southwest Crescent. Some of the noted issues that we discuss is up on Riverside. There is a lot of curves around where these lots will be located. So they will need to do a site study to make sure people can get in and out of their driveway safely without issues related to those curves. Also, we look at some of the lots may require some grading. So we requested that a grading plan be developed by an engineer. According to the applicants, they've already done a soils analysis, so they're ready to do a grading plan. With that, that'll be the extent of my comments. If there's any questions, I'd be willing to answer those.
Thank you, sir. Okay, council members, I'm going to go down the list and give you all an opportunity to speak, and we're going to start with Councillor Hicks.
I have no questions at this time.
Councillor Farmer?
I think it's a great project. I read through it. There was a lot of reading and, and stuff in this particular project. My, I did have concerns with traffic. Hundred twenty houses, each house is going to have at least three or four cars. So I, I was, I was concerned about the impact that it would have with traffic. I'm also concerned about Riverside. There's, there's not much grading. I don't know if you can get, turn off a Riverside into some of those houses because it is so steep and the ground is so far below it. I think there, there might be some need for some guardrails, or some kind of handrails for the curb gutter and sidewalk. Those, those would be my concerns, but I think it's a great project and, and I would definitely support it.
Councillor Beeler?
Well, I personally feel that Sunnyside needs some more housing and we have, I've met a lot of people looking to buy a house and there's just nothing there. And they end up going, you know, east or west of us and buying a house. So I'm happy to see some more houses come and be available in the city of Sunnyside. Other than that, I have no other questions.
Thank you, sir. Councillor Sutuchi?
I would have to echo the sentiments of Councillor Farmer. I, I, I had all the same concerns as he did. And I think traffic is the big issue, but it sounds like that's going to be addressed. So I want to move forward with this project. So, thank you.
All right. And my comments kind of follow along the lines of my colleagues. Traffic is a little bit less of a concern. I think the intersections are able to handle that. But I am concerned, I believe I read that more than twenty lots are going to be accessing their property solely off Riverside. And as I looked at the plat map, I was confused because I thought it looked like they were putting a street in and they would be able to access on the south end of their property. And I am concerned about the grade. It is a steep, steep drop from Riverside to, to the ground level there in, in several areas. And so I'm a little concerned about that. And, and also along with Mr. Farmer, I'm concerned about the curves and safety as people back out of their yards, sometimes hard time seeing traffic coming. And I know that there have been a number of individuals who have been using Riverside as a bit of a race course, seeing how fast and how tightly their cars can steer. And I've experienced that because I sometimes walk along that road in an evening and it's a little spooky from time to time. Other than that, I, I have been looking forward to seeing that property developed for a long time. I think it's been ripe for development. It needs to be done and Sunnyside needs the housing. That has been a mantra of mine for a long time, and I've been very happy to see the houses going in already in this, in this last year. And again, I'm also in favor of this. So okay, so if there's no further comments, hearing none, this closed record decision hearing is closed at six fifty-five PM. What is the desire of council on this item?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, this is Councillor Sutuchi. I would move to approve the recommendation of Sunnyside Planning Commission and approve the Country Gals preliminary plat application to divide a total of twenty-eight acres into total of one hundred and twenty lots.
And we've got a motion by Councillor Sutuchi. Do we have a second?
Counselor, excellent second.
Second by Councillor Hicks, motion by Mr. Sutuchi, second by Mr. Hicks, to approve the attached resolution adopting the finding made by the Planning Commission and approving the Country Gals preliminary plat application. Any debate on this item? Hearing none, we'll ask the deputy clerk to go down with the roll call vote, please.
Deputy Mayor Borisma?
Yes.
Councillor Sutuchi?
Yes.
Councillor Beeler?
Yes.
Councillor Hicks?
Yes.
Councillor Farmer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor, you have five yes and zero no.
All right, motion carries. Item C, interlocal agreement, Tappanish Dispatch Services. Consider authorizing the interim city manager to sign an interlocal agreement with the city of Tappanish to provide dispatch and related services for the city of Tappanish. Madam City Manager?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So this is an interlocal agreement that puts in place a contract with Tappanish basically for doing their dispatch services. And you'll note that this agreement is until two thousand twenty-five. We do have options if we decide that we no longer want to provide this service for them. We do have termination clauses in here. This has two things that it does. And I wanted to make sure that council understood that we kind of flipped a switch and got them on dispatch services very quickly. And now we've, we've got it set up, we're on their radios, and we want to make sure that we're able to do this. And I'm getting, when I'm done talking, I'm going to let Chief Escala explain to you kind of the, the things that they've done and the agreement that the police chiefs have come to. So there is terms in here. Like I said, we wanted to go with this long of an agreement because of union contracts. Our two thousand twenty-two union contract has been negotiated and it expires then. So we wanted the Tappanish contract to be on board for three more years so that we renew and we're not having uncertainty while we go into union negotiations next year. And the very last page, the And the very last page, the Exhibit A that basically outlines. What they will be doing or what we will be doing for them. Is we want that to be a living document because we want the police chiefs to have the ability to go in and say, well, this isn't working for us. And now we need to go in and make a change, or maybe a system would change or something like that. So the Exhibit A is. Updated on a continual basis through mutual agreement. And we just wanted to leave that so that the council didn't have to sign a new interlocal agreement every time they made an operational change. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Police Chief Escalera for an update on how it's going in the actual police department.
Well, good evening, Deputy Mayor and Council. The 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 current process is currently underway. We've done quite well considering the the transition. There has been a few hiccups and one is that we we completely lost communications with. Tappanish over the weekend, however, that was something discovered to be on their end. And we were able to facilitate some assistance and and get some technical help in there and get that fixed and they're up and running, so. This is a a work in progress, of course, there there is no such thing as a smooth transition in these types of. And these types of issues, however. It is moving along and it has really increased the workload, but but they are making it happen up there. The the Appendix A that. Ms. Alba was talking about is something that the chief and I had discussed to leave open because of the. Of how the changes can change, they may have to change immediately in order to. In order to serve or perhaps provide some additional technology or whatever it may be. In order to facilitate this to be a better system across the board. And some of the most of what you'll see there in Appendix A is all operational. And we are currently working on that now on our warrants and our no contact and protection orders, any court order. And we had a meeting and how we're gonna facilitate and and change that already, and so. It's just those things continuously arise and we are meeting those head on, but we are certainly meeting them. Systematically being that we're prioritizing the more crucial. Basically issues and prioritizing those first and making sure that we have a plan and we are approaching it as best that we possibly can. With very little to no cost if possible, so. Appendix A is very important to the chief and I in order to in order to to maintain that fluency and to maintain that ability to change. Again, as Ms. Alba had said, without bringing this forward to. The city council every meeting in order to make a change or to approve a change. But all in all, everything is going quite well.
Thank you. Give council members an opportunity to ask questions. Councilor Rissucci, you get to go first.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. The interim city manager and I spoke about this at our recent meeting and, you know, I I support regional regional ideas, regional approaches. Especially, you know, with cities having to to work with less all the time, so. As long as we can do this, the union doesn't have a problem with it. And it doesn't, you know, put the city of Sunnyside. At risk, then I have no problem. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Council Beeler.
No questions at this time.
Council Hicks.
I'm in agreement with Council Rissucci there. As long as he doesn't put us on the line, I have no problem with it.
And Council Farmer.
What was the the thirty two thousand dollar impact fee for? What what what's that? Fee entail? The word that the budget, excuse me, the budget.
So the thirty two thousand dollars is the amount that. They will be paying us. That's the revenue. And we don't really have any expenditure impact at this point. So that is, we'll need to do a budget amendment on the revenue side.
Okay, and then. I I know the fire districts, they they get paid by call, I believe. Is how much is this? Figure out how much Tappanish is gonna pay us per call.
So let's see if interim city or interim finance. I'm getting confused. Finance Services Director, do you have that information handy? I know you did.
Give me a moment. Let me pull that up. The rate, when we came to this rate, it was not figured on a by-call basis. It was figured based on the required staffing. But we did figure out those per call. Approximate amounts, so let me pull it up for you. So it works out to be approximately twenty eight dollars and fifty five cents per call, and that's based on five years worth of data.
And then about what do we pay or? Other districts in the fire department pay per call? Do you have that information?
I don't have any information on the fire department, I'm sorry.
Okay.
And then.
Go ahead.
Sorry, Council Farmer, I would let you know as well that. Dispatch for fire is very different than dispatch for police. We thought that maybe we could just. Say, well, let's just go to the fire department and and we can do dispatch there. And it's not, they don't, their their codes are different and. It's not something that you're not really comparing apples to apples on on those kind of comparisons.
Okay, and this is gonna require no more additional personnel or no more additional hours by personnel?
No, this will require us to hire two personnel. That's why I wanted it to go for four years. We we are doing it right now, kind of, their staff is working more. And so there will be two more people that we will need to hire next year. Or as soon as.
Are we going to have to? Upgrade our equipment or add equipment to do this?
We've already done that.
All right, that's all I have.
All right, well, Mr. Farmer asked almost most of the questions that I have, so I'm just going to limit myself to a comment on this one. Along with Mr. Rissucci, I am all in favor of regionalism, especially when it favors the city of Sunnyside. However, it is extremely important that we don't put the city of Sunnyside at any risk. The residents of the city deserve to be our first priority. So I want to make sure that that continues. I don't want any slowdown of service here in Sunnyside. However, I am in favor of this idea. I I I like the way this can potentially work out for us, and I hope that it does, so. Yeah, I I like the work you've done. So what is the desire of council on this item?
Councilman Beeler moved to approve.
Council Rissucci, I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Beeler, second by Mr. Rissucci. To authorize the interim city manager to sign an interlocal agreement with the city of Tappanish to provide dispatch and related services for the city of Tappanish. Any debate on this item? Hearing none, we'll ask the clerk to do the roll call vote, please.
Deputy Mayor Burisma.
Yes.
Council Rissucci.
Yes.
Council Beeler.
Yes.
Council Hicks.
Yes.
Council Farmer.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor, you have five yes and zero no.
Thank you. Motion carries. All right, next item, Item D, capital improvements, Central Park. Consider approving a resolution authorizing payment to Sunnyside Daybreak Rotary in the amount of thirty four thousand two hundred and ninety two dollars for the skate park located at Central Park. Madam City Manager.
So this one, for some of you may come as a surprise, but our city park has. Quite a beautiful skate park in it right now that costs Rotary about four hundred thousand dollars. And they did not have their ale fest this year or last year and were short. So I did some digging around and looked at their contract and the city is by RCW allowed to. Make a payment towards the skate park and. How you arrive at that number is you take our population times two, so it's two dollars per citizen that we're allowed to donate. I was there on Friday when the builders were skating it and I passed out city pins to them. And they were so proud of our skate park and how it how it turned out. And I know Rotary. Has put quite a lot of effort into this, and if we can assist them, I think it would be a great thing. So when we first looked at this, Shane and I sat down with current budget reports. And we have three line items that aren't being spent this year. One of them was for a. I'm trying to think. It was for a vote that we may take to the people. So we have money in that line item. There was also hydrant maintenance that we didn't do this year, and then there's also savings in the. Recreation coordinator that was not filled for about seven months. So we can do this without a budget amendment in the current budget. I I highly recommend that we, you know, give them the assistance. With this assistance, they'd be short about five thousand dollars and they have the means to to borrow that to get that payment. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
All right, let's start with Mr. Farmer. Any questions or comments?
I think it was a great project. I commend the Rotary for taking on this and donating it to the city. I am all for doing this.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks.
Oh, yeah, I've been by it a few times. It looks pretty nice. Are we gonna clean it up more for flooding this year?
I believe the Public Works Department has a plan.
All right, that's the only question I had.
Mr. Beeler.
No questions or comments other than it really looks nice down there.
Mr. Rissucci.
I think Mr. Farmer said it best. This is definitely something I'm I'm super excited about having in the city and, yes, this is definitely a good use of the funds.
Thank you, and my comment would be very much the same. I still remember the. Young man from Sunnyside High School who came before council in the summer of two thousand thirteen asking if they could please skate downtown or skate in someplace. And the discussion came up, it would really be cool if we could put a skate park downtown somewhere where these kids could could be. And I have thoroughly enjoyed watching the construction progress. On this skate park and then as I went down the hill and watched kids skating on it. Over the weekend and having a blast with it and last night with the lights shining on it. I don't know who provided the lights, but I'm sure grateful for it because it was fun watching those guys. Out there skating and having a good time, so I'm I'm a hundred percent in favor of this. I think it's something that all the citizens of Sunnyside would be more than happy to can have the city contribute to, so with that. What is the desire of council on this item?
Council Hicks, I'll move to approve.
Councilor Beeler, I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Hicks, second by Mr. Beeler to approve the resolution authorizing payment to the Sunnyside Daybreak Rotary in the amount of thirty four thousand two hundred and ninety two dollars. For the skate park located at Central Park. Is there any debate on this item? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to go down and do the roll call vote, please.
Deputy Mayor Burisma.
Yes.
Council Rissucci.
Yes.
Council Beeler.
Yes.
Council Hicks.
Yes.
Council Farmer.
Allowed, yes.
Deputy Mayor, you have five yes and zero no vote.
Yeah, motion carries. Thank you, and I too am very enthusiastic about this. Next item, Item E, false alarm ordinance. Discuss the proposed change for chapter nine dot nine zero false alarms and provide direction for action at the next council meeting. Madam City Manager.
I'm gonna turn this over to Police Chief Escalera and he will go over the options and see what you guys think.
Yes, again, good evening, Deputy Deputy Mayor and City Council. I am bringing before you some revisions to chapter nine point nine zero alarm systems, primarily focusing on the false alarm. And the responsible actions, things that we could use. Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I thought, oh, I thought somebody had chimed in, but also. Along with me this evening is is Commander Joey Glosson. Who did the majority of the of the research and will help with any questions if we if we have any. At the end of the presentation here, but. It's it's all based on our historic. Responses meaning that the fire department and the police department both to many alarm calls throughout our business district and neighborhoods that were proven as false alarms. These false alarms are due to the lack of upgraded equipment, failed security measures and protocols by employees. And also by homeowners and other factors that that cause repeat responses by police and fire both. And for, there were many times that you can you could respond to a business. Multiple times in an evening. For false alarms, but. The ordinance does not. Negate or or allow a police officer not to respond, and that's not what we're trying to do here. What we're trying to do is ensure that we place the service of our continual responses. And the wait time that it takes for responsible to come down to a district or to a business or a resident. In order to secure it, in order to reset an alarm and secure it, and that takes up a considerable amount of time. And it is something that we have not had, the ordinance has been in place for. I believe it's been in place for over a decade now. But it's something that since I've been here has not been used. However, the response has certainly been there by both entities, both public safety entities, meaning fire and police. And so. Attached is a basically a revision that addresses the number of allowable false alarms within a specified period. And it provides a penalty schedule for subsequent false alarms thereafter. Additionally, the 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 proposal addresses the manner in which the billing for false alarm shall be conducted by. The city of Sunnyside, which was addressed with Ms. Horner, so. In the. In your packet there, you should have the revision, the revisions there, hopefully it is a a colored copy. And in the colored copies, you'll see some some red and some green font. And that is, those are the revisions that we have made. In using neighboring neighboring agencies in order to assist us with the with the verbiage and some of the things that they're currently doing. But again, this is something that does not, we are certainly not saying that we we're not gonna respond to these. Because we respond to all of them and we continually do that. We've done so in the past and do it currently and will do that in the future. However, again, it is it is a very repeated and time-consuming process. And oftentimes, it's it's there are many factors that are controlled or can be controlled by the businesses. We rarely will go to house alarms of this nature that that we that it's kind of repetitive. It's more so the business district. That we that we deal with, so. In that, in this proposal, there's there's. There is a graduated scale basically that that provides. You know, false alarm. Sanctions, if you will, if they're not proven, if they are proven to be false. And then the very first one within a calendar year, a single calendar year, there is no charge for the first one. As these things do happen. However, the second false alarm within a calendar. However, the second false alarm within a calendar year is a fifty dollar charge that is provided to the city of Sunnyside. And the third false alarm within a calendar year is seventy five dollars. And a fourth or more or consequent alarms within calendar years, a hundred dollars each. And the mechanism basically would, we we have attempted to find a service to basically track and submit the billing, or actually the invoices to City Hall and allow City Hall to handle the 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 billing process. However, we have not been successful yet in in finding this service. So we are going to need to be doing that in-house. And going to a calendar year is much more sensical and it much it's much easier for us to to do in order to be accurate in our billing and our tracking. So you will you will find that that's also in there, the mechanism as to how the payment is to be made and where it goes. Also, in the false alarm ordinance, there's a response to alarm location that we currently have in there where we have the responsible that is supposed to show up at the at the location and secure and reset the alarms. And there are times that we have had officers in excess of well over a half hour to an hour in waiting for these folks to arrive. And so there is a a penalty not to exceed five hundred dollars for each separate infraction for for these types of occurrences. And without reading everything line for line, I I just want to say that this is long overdue. It's something that we have talked about in the past. We just haven't we just didn't act on it or didn't have really a good sense of how we wanted to approach this to where it appeared fair to both the city and the and the the business district and homeowners. So but with that, we certainly stand for questions.
Thank you, sir. And we will start with questions from council members. We'll start with Council Farmer.
I got several. What were the fees for a false alarm before?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Joey, but I believe they were twenty five or thirty five dollars.
I believe it's twenty five dollars, correct.
Twenty five dollars and it was it was it. That was, I don't know that it was.
Right, it was twenty five dollars per occurrence and it was a moving target, if you will. It was, I believe, within a ninety day period. And so you would have to actually track each alarm throughout the whole process to find out if they've actually, if they were out of compliance.
Okay, and and then the next one would be the non-payment of fee. I think ten calendar days is not near enough, especially if the business has an entity that pays out of town by the time it passes a whole bunch of deaths. I I just don't think that's near enough time. I would I would like to see the bill be included in the utility bill if that's possible. And then if the utility bill is passed due, then then it is passed due. And and you get the non-payment. Fine, then. And then response to alarm location. The last sentence was not to exceed five hundred dollars for each separate infraction. I I don't like the wording there. I I think we should have a specific number. Otherwise, it's arbitrary. One guy might get charged more than another guy, and I think we're in trouble. Although those are my comments.
So really quick, Council Farmer, so the and in, if you do have a colored copy of this, you know, those were the the areas in the red were kind of, you know, that's, those are areas that I, you know, just wasn't sure what, you know, what was, you know, what we would look at there. And as far as the bottom one, that may be another scale that we would want to put in there in the in the place there. And and those and those are my thoughts. And I and I realize that. I I'd say I I want this thing to be very firm. So when so when there is a problem, we know exactly what we're doing and exactly how we're doing it. I I agree, I would, I agree with this. It takes resources to respond to false alarms. And while you're responding to a false alarm, there may be somebody that needs you more. So I I I'm in total agreement with with what you're trying to do. I just think it needs to be firmed up. Okay, and and with discussing this with the chief, you know, the the whole idea is to try and get compliant. And 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 that's the the whole goal there.
Councilor Hicks.
My only suggestion would be, do we have a caveat in there for power outages? All these systems have a tiny, tiny battery as backup. Then when the power is out for too long, it'll set the alarm.
Yes, to answer that, yes, there is, that that does. It has clearly stated in here in false alarm defined under nine nine zero zero three zero, it shall not be considered a false alarm when the system is activated by weather or power failures. But you're absolutely right, those things. You know, there are, there are some some contributing factors. And our personnel are very used to determining what those factors are by by confronting the responsible once they get there.
Councilor. Councilor Beeler, have you any questions?
The only thing I wanted to bring up, Mr. Farmer already brought it up, was the ten day for payment. I'm really thinking we need like a net thirty or something because businesses do mostly do payments once a month. I'd like to see something like that in there.
Councilor Ristucci.
I would agree with with Counselor Farmer and Counselor Beeler. I also, chief, my question to you is, when it comes to the ser- the services that the the homeowner or the business is paying the company to alert you, are we charging based off of that alert or based off of the response? Because often, we, you know, I I've had ten false alarms this year, but they didn't notify you. So you didn't respond.
Correct. And we we charge by the response.
Okay, that's all the only question I had, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
All right, thank you. So, yeah, some of the concerns voiced are also concerns of mine. I do sort of have a I I do kind of have an issue of lines like not to exceed because that does. And I know it allows some leeway for for certain things. There can be some difficulty. But not to exceed five hundred dollars is a little bit vague. And you're going to have people asking, well, why did I have to pay five hundred dollars? He only had to pay a hundred and forty or something along those lines. So I think you might need to revisit that just a little bit. But at the same time, I'm going to say something that sounds very contradictory. I have a, I I've got a real hard time with zero tolerance policy because it doesn't allow any any kind of judgment. So yeah, I'm not sure where to go with that one, but I think people would appreciate, yeah, okay, if they if they can't get a body out there who's responsible for that building within X period of time, then there should be some sort of penalty for that. And I do like the idea of everything being very simple, very clear, very easy to understand. This is going out to not only business owners but homeowners and the less complicated that it can be, the better off we are. I think that we are good with the amounts that you are proposing. We don't get a lot of false alarms. I know my alarm company too will alert me before they alert the police. And I have been able to check them before they call and say, yeah, everything's fine. I just left the fire going in my fireplace. And so that set off the motion detector or something along those lines. But yeah, I think these are fair. I think the idea is a good one. So yeah, it it sounds as if, and and correct me if I'm wrong, counsel, but it sounds as if generally we're we're in approval of of the idea and and the direction you're heading. I it seems as if council is saying that there are some things that need to be tightened up and looked at. A couple of things that were mentioned was the payment within fifteen days. That does seem to be a little bit of a short window of opportunity. I like the idea of of just attaching it to the utility bill, but if you don't have the mechanism to do that, you're still going to have some work to do to figure out how to make that all work. But yeah, there's things to work on, but I think you're moving in the right direction personally. Any other questions or comments, council members?
Yes, this is Council Farmer again.
Yes, sir.
I I wasn't able to understand the answer to Council Ristucci's question. If you just have a siren that goes off, that's not a, that's not a false alarm, then, is that correct?
That's correct.
Well, it may be, that's correct, yeah. It may, it may be a false alarm, but it's not something that as long as there isn't a response from the police department, then it would not count.
Okay. And and the police department, like say, if if my security system siren went off and the neighbor called, said, hey, this guy's alarm's going off. And then you responded, then would I be responsible if it was a false alarm?
Yes, that that'd be, that would be a, that would be a response by the police department for a false alarm issue.
Okay, thank you.
And if I may make a comment, the utility bill option is not something that we are able to exercise. Those are utilities and we cannot add charges to those that are outside of the utility.
Now, sometimes we're overly optimistic and buy in the sky, but it was a nice thought.
Because I I have always said, I wish we could put dog license renewal on the utility bill so people didn't forget. But we're not allowed to. So I I've I've looked into that for twenty one years.
Okay, well, there must be a reason for it somewhere that they're not allowed to do that. All right, moving on to the next item, items from council members, mayor's appointments for boards and commissions. I have received nothing from Mayor Guerrero on this. So we'll move on to item B, council request status report. Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So we don't have any updates on anything on here. We do have well, really, there's not not much, not much has changed. So we're just still trying to work on everything else. The prosecutor, RFP, I really, really think that we should, at a workshop, discuss options. Our city really should have a city attorney that's an in-house city attorney. And I think if we could go out for prosecutor slash city attorney, it would be good for us. We have enough business that we do. And it would be nice to have a city attorney where we could walk down the hall and say, hey, I need to ask you a quick question, or can you do this for me? Right now, we don't always get turnaround from our attorney as fast as we need, so.
Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I could respond to that, Madam City Manager, I'm welcome, I I welcome a workshop to discuss that. But there are some serious issues to think about before we bring in in-house attorney.
I agree. That's why I'd like to set a workshop maybe for February or March. There's no hurry on this. Where our current system is working, it's not broken. But I do think that's something that we need to at least investigate and see if it's something that we could do. And I do know how complicated and hard it can be to do in-house city attorney.
Very good. Other items on the council request status report? Nothing more? All right, the next item then would be other reports, announcements and or questions by council, and I will go down the list and give everyone opportunity. And we will start with Mr. Beeler.
I have nothing to say.
Very good. Mr. Hicks.
I have nothing to report.
Mr. Farmer.
Nothing to report.
Councilor Ristucci.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I have two items. The first one is I had the opportunity to attend the twenty twenty two audit exit conference with the auditors. And, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I want to say, and 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 I don't, I don't know how to say this as loud as I can, Mr. Farmer, you'll understand. This is the best audit I have seen in my entire council career. This is the best audit I have seen in my entire council career. And not since Bud Shots ran the finance department have we had no findings and no management letters. And the auditor went as far as to say that any previous management letters have either been cured or resolved. So kudos to Ms. Alba and her team. Then the other item, Mr. Deputy Mayor, is the Yakima Valley Council Government's received a response from the county commissioners regarding the request to run the homeless program. They have given in on some parts and not on others. So we're still in negotiations and hopefully I'll have something to report after this, the first meeting in December, Mr. Deputy Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. And I look forward to hearing that report because I am very curious of how that's going to go. So yeah, and so for my part, I was going to say something very similar to what Mr. Ristucci said. Kudos to our finance department. That was very exciting to see that we had no findings against us. That was awesome. I think we've been working very hard for a number of years to get to that. I know that our finance department was struggling against some some issues, trying to get everything brought up to speed and up to where it was supposed to be. And you did it. And you have the right to feel very good about yourself. So I I am very pleased. Yeah, when I think of what the city's gone through in the last few years to get to this point, that was just very exciting. And then to read it again in the paper and public information, I think I've had comments on that to me. And yeah, I got to brag about it, but I got to brag because of your work, not because of mine. So, well done.
And I would just like to publicly say thank you to all of the city employees because this was a group effort. This was a team. I I all by myself could not have made the changes without everybody pulling their own weight. And that means, you know, all the way from the top to the bottom, whoever's here and has helped, they, we, Jamie did a really great job. She sent everybody cookies. And everybody in the city got a thing of cookies and a great, great job, you know, good teamwork. So when I say thank you to everybody, it was, it was just amazing to get that information.
No, and it was, I agree one hundred percent. And yeah, I can't imagine how it must feel to be to be the one who was working on it. Excellent. Okay, moving on, upcoming council meetings. Madam City Manager.
So we have two things on the agenda, or three things, sorry, three things I was thinking too, because two of them are related to street improvement and city safety plan. So we have the Sixth Street Improvement Project update. And if you've read your council brief, we did receive funding for that. And so our match has gone way down. We're almost at a I believe it was four hundred and fifty thousand plus, and now we're at about a hundred and thirty five thousand. And we do have money in the TBD to to pay for that match. And then the city safety plan, that's the one we talked about where we'll bring forward identified areas that are problems and start on a long-term planning solution so that we have the document ready when grants come up. The next one is preliminary Platts code update. That will be the planning department bringing forward a code update to that. And it's just basically for you guys to to go through. And then at our last meeting in December, because we do normally cancel the last meeting, we'll have the twenty twenty two budgeted option, preliminary Platts code update, twenty twenty one budget amendment number four. And then Amaresco will be on with the citywide energy audit. We also will have, that's not on here, the update to the twenty twenty two compensation and classifications. So that would be on all the union contracts that are settled. We'll bring forward the schedule for everybody in the city. And that's all we have coming up.
Very good. And I have a question. And council members, you may chip in here, but as I recall, do we not frequently cancel our January workshop?
We do, sir. Yes.
Okay, because it seems as if the the first regular meeting of January, we seat new council members and new committee assignments and that sort of thing. It's very shortly after the new year. And I know people tend to travel. And so I don't know if, uh, council members would be in agreement, but I would be in favor of, um, a motion to cancel the January three workshop if, uh, council so desires.
This is Councilman Farmer, so moved.
Counselor Ristucci, second.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Farmer, second by Counselor Ristucci to cancel the January three workshop. Is there any debate on this item?
No debate, Mr. Deputy Mayor, but I, I did speak to the interim city manager in Barth this, and, and she may want to say a few words first.
All right, Madam City Manager.
I'm fine with us canceling. We can move this to February. Like, like I've said, there's nothing earth-shattering on here. Um, we, we have personnel policy review and compensation study. That'll give us a little more time um, to get those pulled together so that we have a complete package to bring forward.
Excellent. All right, there's no other debate. Then I will ask the clerk for the roll call vote, please.
Deputy Mayor, uh, Borzma?
Yes.
Counselor Ristucci?
Yes.
Counselor Beeler?
Yes.
Counselor Hicks?
Yeah.
Counselor Farmer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor, you have five yes and zero no votes.
Motion carries in the opinion of the chair. So therefore the January three workshop meeting will be canceled. All right, next item on the agenda is items from department heads. Madam City Manager.
Well, I feel like I've talked a lot this meeting, so I don't have really any updates to give you, except for that I did sign the official document releasing the skate park back to the city today. So it's official, it is ours. Um, and with that, I am going to turn it over to Chief Escalera.
Uh, good evening. I, uh, don't have too much to report. We had, uh, Congressman Newhouse, uh, in our office today. He spent the afternoon with us. Um, he did a ride along with us. It was, um, it was nice to have him and, and, uh, very favorable, uh, contact there and, uh, and visit today. So, um, also he made some time to, uh, sit with, uh, uh, Yakima Valley Law Enforcement at Snipes and, and that went, that went very well. So, uh, but that's all I have to report right now.
And Chief Anderson.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, uh, Deputy Mayor and Council. I only have one thing. And, uh, with the resolution, uh, pronouncement tonight for the farm implement parade, I, I understand, I think the volunteers are in the, taking the steps to try to kick off the, uh, chili feed again. I'll have a little bit more information. Well, we won't have opportunity, I guess, to, to convey that. So, um, if you see it, visit, please. Thank you.
Interim Finance and Admin Services Director Horner.
And you, City Manager. Somebody's echoing. Um, I do have a couple of things. Um, first, this last Saturday, there was the, the Parks and Rec. Hosted the Thanksgiving to Go. Um, they served three hundred and sixty-one meals. They were only planning to get about three hundred. So we had an excellent turnout. Um, eighty, or excuse me, forty-eight of those meals went to the senior center for their luncheon. And they sold, um, three hundred and thirteen to the community at large. Um, we wanted to again thank the sponsors, which were Safeway, Walmart Grocery Outlet, Bon Vino's, Pepsi and Starbucks, and the volunteer organizations Lions Club Rotary, um, and High School Key Club. Um, and then we also wanted to make sure that you are aware that on the fourth, there will be, um, a visit with Santa held by Parks and Rec also at the downtown Christmas market. And then an update on the ARPA utility billing, um, relief funds. So far we have funded a hundred and five, um, utility repayments for a total of seventy thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars and thirty-seven cents. So that is going really well. And then I just wanted to say again that we're very, very happy about the, the audit results. And I know I haven't been here that long, but I'm still very proud of it. And, um, as the city manager said, every aspect of everyone who works for this, for this town, um, is responsible and gets to celebrate in this because everyone who codes an invoice or buys something or fills out a piece of paperwork correctly, that's all audited. So from top to bottom, as she said, um, everyone did a great job. That's all I've got. Thanks.
And Public Works Director Fisher.
Yeah, good evening. I, I do have a couple of items. Um, on the skate park, a, a couple of updates. Um, we did, uh, actually Jay Hester met with a landscape, um, a landscaper today to look at the restoration, uh, around the park. Everything's pretty torn up and dirty. Uh, I think it was Counselor Hicks had mentioned about the sledding hill. And, um, so they're gonna come in, we'll take a look at, uh, trying to get stuff restored, kind of put some gravel down, uh, probably fence off a couple of areas to keep people out of it. Um, right now, the biggest issue seems to be the tracking in of mud into the park, uh, into the skate park, onto the concrete. So trying to, gonna reduce that, put gravel in, uh, to, to try to, to save that. Um, and then we also have lighting that's gonna go in out there. So I have a meeting next Wednesday with PPNL. Um, it's taken us a while to get the meeting set up with them. Um, they're, they're pretty busy and shorthanded. So we were kind of hoping to be a little farther along with the lighting. Um, but we have several contractors, some local, uh, vendor, uh, businesses, and one electrical contractor that's, uh, that's gonna donate, um, some fixtures. And of course, uh, some labor wire, uh, to get those lights up. So meet with PPNL next Wednesday, uh, we're gonna set a new panel there on, on the existing pole. And, uh, see if we can get some conduit and stuff in the ground and get some lights put up, um, so that the kids can use it, you know, past dusk. Um, our park hours right now currently are, are gone till dusk. But if we get some lights up, uh, we'll have to put some provisions somewhere in our code that kind of talks a little bit about, we don't want kids all hours of the night, you know, with those lights on. So probably put them on a timer. So like nine or ten o'clock or whatever we feel, we'll bring that back to council to discuss. Uh, what do we feel like is a good time for those lights to shut off, um, for the kids to go home? We'll, we'll, we'll decide that in a later date. And then, um, the ADA ramp, uh, is completed at the senior center. Uh, uh, Kane and Mitch finished that up last week. Uh, they're, they're over the moon about it. So, um, I think originally we had talked about that project being about eighty thousand to rebuild all the sidewalks. And, and the two ADA ramps on each end. And we went ahead and, and bought a modular, portable ramp and put it in for, I'm guessing about, about three grand. So, um, made out pretty well on that. Uh, they're excited. And, um, and that's all I have.
And Deputy City Clerk Rengel.
I have nothing to report.
All right, everyone. Thank you very much. Um, one thing that this evening's meeting has impressed upon me is that Sunnyside has a lot of positives. Uh, from a great audit and great staff to our implement parade coming up to the volunteers and everyone who's involved in that, and everyone who's been involved in the skate park and who's still donating time and materials. Um, we've got a lot that we can brag about in Sunnyside. And I think it's a fantastic way to go into Thanksgiving because this is a lot that we can be thankful for. So well done, everybody. Um, I wish you all a great Thanksgiving. And if there's nothing else to, uh, come before us, this meeting is adjourned at seven forty-eight PM. Have a fantastic Thanksgiving holiday, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yes, you. Happy Thanksgiving.